Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting for March first, 2022. Uh, we'll have Mr. Fleming do the invitation for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Father and our God, our Maker, Creator, we come in the name of Jesus. Father, we come this afternoon thanking you for all your blessings and to restore upon us. Thank you for making the way out of nowhere. Thank you for how you provided. You've been good, and you've been good all by yourself. We pray today that you bless each and every commissioner, look on our staff, look on your constituents, look on our county. We know that you're able to do all things yourself well, and we know that we make a reality of it. Blessed with your decisions, blessed with your blessing. We stand in the name of Father, we ask Jesus all the blessings. In Jesus' name we pray that.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving along, we'll, uh, have the approval of the minutes for the February fifteenth, 2022 regular board of all. Do I have any discussion or have a motion approved? Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, we're gonna pull on item number seven and item number eleven. So we'll be approving two through six, eight through ten, and twelve through fourteen. Do I have any discussion or motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. What's this?
Just for the record.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Fleming, thank you. Item number seven, uh, there were some questions about some of the legal leads in this contract. Uh, Mr. Prabat, could you help us with that?
And as I understand, the question, uh, about it is that there's language in here that talks about, um, when you get down to conflict situations and that the, uh, firm can have a conflict situation with the county, and even with a conflict, they're able to sue the county on another end, uh, on a conflict. Well, the real deal is in the contract is the firm is, uh, a law firm. The county is only securing from them non-legal services. As a result of that, they wanted to put into the contract to clarify that this is a non-legal, uh, contract, not legal services contract, uh, to clarify their responsibilities and duties not being, uh, attorneys for this. So they asked for those particular types of provisions, and it even has a provision in it that if we, uh, do desire to hire them for legal services, we will do that by a separate agreement. In that separate agreement, then, of course, that conflict provision would go out because we're now having legal services versus non-governmental consulting services. You wouldn't see this in your typical consulting contract. A typical consulting contract would not have this legal representation language in it. As they do for consulting purposes, they wouldn't do anything, they're still not going to do anything on the consulting side. That would be a conflict for us. But being lawyers, they're just covering their bounds, you know, on the legal side versus the non-legal services side. That's why that language is in there.
So you're saying if somebody came to them for legal services that went against Swan County, they can represent them as well against us?
Yes, they could.
But it doesn't have anything to do with just the consultation partners?
Correct.
But there might not be that experience.
Go ahead.
There might not be that possibility that that happened, but they're just covering themselves.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Not that they would do it, but, you know, if something did arise, uh, and they consulted with somebody on the legal side, uh, about a matter that happened to this one, something, they didn't want them to have any conflict there because they're not rendering legal services under disagreement.
So you're okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
Mr. Hancock? So what you're saying is basically...
I'm not a responser.
Okay, Doc, six one thirty five, we agree with that. So what you're saying is, we're gonna pay a firm, or the consulting arm of this law firm?
Yes, sir.
And that firm can turn around and sue the county? For our representative suing the county?
If there was an unrelated, if there was an unrelated, something totally unrelated to our consulting services, a case came in, you know, that they had, they could do that. Still, under the bar rules, they'd have to give us notice, you know, about it, but they would not be prohibited from, you know, doing that.
Could you, could you legally amend this to say if something along those lines did happen and they did represent someone that's gonna sue the county, and what are the reasons? To return all our money? We're not gonna pay somebody, represent somebody else to sue us. Makes no sense to me.
Well, it's too, I think where you're going wrong here, Mr. Hancock, is, is two separate things. We're hiring just, we're just hiring the lobbyist's part of this, not the legal part of this.
That's right. I understand that. But it's the same firm.
Yes, sir.
There's a consulting arm and a legal arm.
You're right.
We're paying the consulting arm. So if somebody goes in, that firm decides that they're gonna sue Swan County on that person's behalf. Can we get our money back from the other half, like? Because it went to the firm. I'm not gonna pay somebody that's gonna turn around and sue or represent somebody. Makes no sense to me to do that. That's like hitting a golf ball against a brick wall and it comes back and knocks you in the head. I don't, I, that I don't understand. They'll do whatever.
Thank you.
I don't know that that's true, Mr. Fleming, but I think that, that's business, and I think if, if anybody's doing that, they're gonna be done differently.
Well, I just realize it's illegal when a lobbyist, I get where Mr. Hancock's coming from, I don't want to place him up against you, but I don't think they're gonna amend that contract to do that.
Mr. Chairman. Sir, I agree with what Mr. Hancock's saying, too. I guess I would ask Mr. Prabat. I know we've, not gonna say amended that, but we've changed it to protect ourselves. Is there anything we can do, uh, or that you can write on behalf of the board of county to, uh, I won't say to answer to this, but to, to give us a, an umbrella, if you will, or our net, safety net?
Well, from the standpoint that I did make changes in disagreement, the particular language and the way they have it in here, we also discussed it and tweaked it a little bit, but the, again, I don't see the problem with the separation. If they're gonna have something that would happen and have to come up before the county because they're firm, I mean, against the county, they'd still have to give us, you know, appropriate notice under the bar rules. They're making sure that, you know, the folks that they have here are not, it's non-legal stuff only, it's just the consulting, you know, things. So, I mean, uh, we can talk to them about that, but I thought that, you know, working through this to try to clarify the language and clarify their responsibilities, consulting versus, uh, legal. Thought we came up with a pretty good, you know, language here to keep that separated.
Mr. Chairman.
Who's going?
I'm good with it. I understand, totally understand what Mr. Hancock's saying, but when I think, when Mr. Grissom was here, and I don't have that information here in front of me, I was looking for it, but, uh, this firm is rather large, and they're like Mr. Bass said, they're two different arms, the way he explained it. We're really working with the left arm in the lobbyist consulting. There is a right arm, which we're not rendering services with, that is, all over the state of Florida. I wanna say it's a hundred employees, a hundred plus. I think it's kind of a, I see, talk about a CYA type thing, the left arm covering the right, making sure that I don't get any legal trouble, um, for lack of better words. And I think that's kind of what this is all about, but I'm okay with it.
What? I think that's why we got Mr. Prabat. If they sue us, we're gonna have somebody represent us. If there's no more discussion on this, can I get a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Fleming, second by Mr. Stapleton, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven, uh, it's just a clarification. It was a purchase of that two fifty pickup truck, the price changed from...
So there were two issues, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there was a sheet in there that the dealer had sent that should not have been in there that said the quantity was thirty trucks. While we would have thirty trucks, um, this is actually one truck, the one that was budgeted in the workshop. So the price, corrected price is also forty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars.
And we had forty-five thousand budgeted?
We had forty-five thousand budgeted, and this, uh, is utilizing the source well better than we did the contract.
Is there any questions?
I'm gonna start off, our motions are approved. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there any Commissioner Allen's at this time?
Um, I do have one. We almost forgot. It was brought to my attention, I live this late Friday afternoon, um, I prepped this book and Mr. Prabat about it, but he's aware of his well. There's a parcel of property that is now listed for sale. I don't have the signs on the property yet, but it is publicly on MLS. The two, the two buildings right in front of the courthouse used to be, uh, the Mexican restaurant, and an office space next door. Those two parcels are both for sale. It joins courthouse. Um, I was just gonna throw it out there to the board, see what the board, if the board had any interest whatsoever, and if so, we're, I don't know where we go from there, but totally the board's decision. There's, I'd say it is listed publicly, it's for sale. If we have any interest, there's no sign on the property, but some of all that, my intention is, it's in MLS, came in late Friday or Saturday morning.
Mr. Fleming?
I am. I have the second information, but I would, I would be interested in following up and just getting additional information. Yes.
Um, I might add a little bit, I'll bear with you one second. Can tell you a little bit about it. Um, it's, uh, a tenth of an acre parcel and eighteen tenths of an acre. Um, two buildings, one built nineteen seventy, one built nineteen oh one, roughly twenty-two hundred square feet of office space, uh, which is divided into three different offices. None of the interior walls are loaded. There's a lot of stuff here. Um, I just wanna throw it out there and kind of bring it to the board's attention. Obviously, Commissioner Stapleton's concerned about it as well, to see if there's any intent, you know, if we're interested for parking or any future use, it's out there, it could be, if we're not interested about it, it may never come back available, I don't know.
We have the number, pardon?
Yes. The ask price, I'm glad you're sure y'all are all sitting, uh, they're asking four forty. That's the ask? I didn't come up with that number, somebody else did, but it is out there and it is for sale without price. So, there it is.
Good. I guess we need to direct out to Mr. Prabat to look into it some more, or prevent the somebody else's initiative?
Um, but we can gather, you know, additional information, be able, and be able to distribute it, but to be able to purchase it for whatever value it would be, we would have to then, you know, get an option on it, be able to have time, be able to have an appraisal done on the property, so that then we can judge, you know, where it needs to be and what kind of vote we would take, because if you're gonna purchase a piece of property, it's gonna be more than what your appraised value would be to seek the majority, to be able to do that, because if, if it's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
Well, that would probably be an environmental survey over, too, because those guys might be here at one time.
Well, I know on the corner there, there were, uh, back, um, when Bill Lundy did a long time ago, they had to do a survey and they dug up a, a lot of those tanks, and a lot of it was directed, you know, back then, and so I don't know that a phase one environmental would really help us there, but we'd have to, you know, jump up to the phase two directly to be able to, you know, be able to test that. But if we, like I said, put an option, if we have, you know, time on the front end, that also could be accomplished.
Is that something the board wants to do?
But I just, Mr. Chairman, I just like this information, I, I'm trying to perfect that, you know, more in detail.
Well, if they've already got the price at four forty, I guess there's no negotiating until you give an option on it or do what you're gonna do, so I'm gonna say, we need a way to give an option on it if you don't look at it.
Put a sixty day provision in it?
For due diligence.
And that would be if you wanted to tie it up directly and quickly, that would be the way to go about it.
Mr. Chairman. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Stapleton. I think the number's high, hopefully it could be purchased for a number less than that. I don't know what that number is, but I don't have an immediate use, but hindsight's always twenty twenty. I would think thirty years from now, looking back, somebody'd be glad that we kind of purchased that. I mean, we, we put a lot of money in that courthouse over the last twenty years, and I don't think it's, it's going anywhere. It tends to go and, uh, yeah, and parking's already, you know, paying there, especially on the days they're having court and trial, it's tough, but, you know, it's thunderbolt. I'm just throwing it out, it'd be asking.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with what Mr. Chairman's here. It was, I think we discussed this like my very first year on the board, and they had come up with it, but it went away quickly, and it just wasn't, you know, needed at that time, and I think the money was out of the county's wallet, so, uh, but I, I don't know if we have to tie it up, or do we just there and gather some more information and have some conversation and...
We don't have to tie it up. I mean, you get the information and, you know, be able to look at it and then, you know, consider something, but, you know, maybe the price at four forty, nobody would wanna be, you know, jumping light on it anyway.
I'm sure.
We may have time to, you know, just deal with it in that fashion.
So I guess who we have to sense is just to get him to get some more information and bring it back. Yes, sir. Any other Commissioner Allen's? Moving along to, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to go over this, uh, we had spoke really quick about the churches and trying to do something with a solid base.
Yes, sir.
And we'd asked Mr. Prabat to do some research for us also. Uh, so I have a legal, legal opinion here from Mr. Prabat, he furnished me two days' legal opinion, Mr. Brandon, I didn't want us to look at it, of the bottom, whatever. I would just like to have some short, concise with Mr. Prabat. It's pretty clear what he's wrote in here, how many he's basically telling us that we can't do anything. Uh, and I would say, I agree with you, I'm just gonna say that's your opinion, or I'll have a church's legal. That's what separates us. I mean, it's, it's pretty thoroughly the opinion here, I, you know, what we have some confidence, they might discuss it online, and it adds, not adds up to about what you're saying, you, you just make, give us a short version.
Yeah, the short version is that under the current code sections and then the resolutions that were adopted along with it, um, we're not allowed to be able to treat churches or even extending it, you know, anybody any different without maybe making major revisions, you know, to the, to the code. Even if you wanted to treat the churches, you know, separately, as current customers or, you, you then get into constitutional issues of discrimination and separation of church and state, so you get into multitude of other issues in trying to narrow it down to, you know, to get to that. And that's not to say that in according with all of it you, you have to do, I still don't think it would still pass muster if you tried to, again, make a class that would be different on the commercial side of it, because it is not a tax, it is a general service, and services are treated differently than, um, you know, taxable services. So in the end, uh, unless you wanted to go back and revamp anything and everything, and then try to send and hope that nobody notices it, and then, you know, move on down the road, I would not recommend, uh, trying to do any of those types of things under the, under that situation, with the commercial coverage of situations. Was that short enough?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I haven't seen that, but I hear what you guys are saying. Um, when you said revamp, revamp the solid waste side of things, or revamp, um...
Commercial code is in sixty-two, one ninety-two, and it's, it's part of our code of ordinances. You have to go back in and revamp all of it, to then include churches. Then you can't just include churches, then you gotta include everybody that fits into that same class of, of folks, like I mentioned, you know, last night at the meeting, you know, the local, you know, there's other things that are there, the religious institutions that are not churches, there are charitable institutions that are not churches, that all fit into the same classifications, so you have to go back and include, you know, all of them. But even if you went back and included all of them, because it's a general service, what about that business just right down the street? Uh, you're, you're treating them differently for providing the same service, and I just, I think you're opening a can of worms if you really don't wanna, you know, try to get into, um, and that's my opinion.
Would that include, like, funeral homes, like, including those, or...
Yes, sir. Funeral homes are general, uh, general commercial business, they don't even follow their, the same category as the charitable organizations or religious institutions.
Be more like nonprofits, kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
But you'd have to report it.
Have to include them all.
So, and I'm just thinking out loud here, I mean, obviously, I have received two calls. Uh, I don't know about the rest of you folks, but, um, I can just see us, uh, you know, the church ladies down here after this conversation, more answers, but, um, is it something, I know we hold public events, we, we hold, uh, Christmas spirit, whatever, we donate things and do things, is there things we could do throughout the year for, like, their home companies, things like that? Could we, you know, donate a trash can for that, or...
Generally speaking, you know, you would have to have those applications made by June of this year, as it would, because you'd then have to include it under our nonprofit, um, you know, budgetary item. I know what, I can't remember what number, but, you know, have, and whether you even used it all, you know, for this year, but that's the type of thing that have to be presented to be able to handle that type of situation.
So these, I mean, that's good information to have, and they would, it would be treated like everyone else, they could apply for it, and that would be, you know, their responsibility. They teach the Bible, taking homecoming and things of that nature. I mean, anything that would help, I mean, may not, you know, is just a mandate as well, but anything would, I think.
Do you want to...
I'll just close in saying this, I mean, uh, I'm disappointed, honestly. This is really not my priority. I would say that you don't believe. And that's what I'm at today. And I'm not gonna agree with him, I'm on, I'm on, put that on the record, I'm gonna agree with him, but it's what he does, it's what we pay him to do, so I just gotta take this one on the chin, just move on.
I don't think you're taking it on the chin, I think you, you came out and was trying to do a good thing, I just think it opens up way more, way more problems than you could ever imagine going forward, and, and it's like I said the other night, it's just a, it's a business we're trying to get out of anyway, so I don't know where we can even help them that much after we're completely out of that commercial can business, so, but that's all to you for trying to. It's not that I have anything against the church, but it's, it's just one of those things.
That's why all you gotta do is just tell them, it's those damn lords, they're gonna...
I'll trust them. Moving along to general business, or is there any other Commissioner Allen's?
I can't follow that.
Okay. Under, uh, general business, item number fifteen, discuss a possible board action, authorize a surplus health department, building located in Brentford, and establish a base bid. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have information on the particular property? Um, and several people are familiar with it, we've been asked this question over the years, so where are they gonna get rid of the building? It's been used several times on and off by different entities. The reality is, it's a substantial building in its current condition and has been for years, so you have the information for establishing a base bid, and are asking the board to consider the surplus establishing a base bid, so they can turn it over to the state company.
Well, being that it's in my district, I'll speak to it, I think that's gotta have a roof put on it, doesn't it?
It would more than that.
Yeah, well, I realize that, but I think the biggest thing is a high roof.
Yeah, it probably needs roof and lots of those things. Mr. Chairman, what's your thoughts on this?
Last one, I'll split it up here. Are you sure? Another thousand, let's see if this, that's what I'm gonna get here.
Forty-nine hundred, forty-six hundred square foot building?
Yeah, and it's a block building. It'd be a great building, it's just gonna have some work in it, and I'd walk through it.
Just in your district, I'll follow your lead on that one, be more familiar with how I am.
I'd like to start at, I think seventy-five thousand, if y'all agree with that. Seems like everything we've done so far, going up to wanting an appraisal, I mean, obviously that's the base bid anyway, so, if that's, do with everybody else, I'm gonna... Mr. District, I'm fine.
As big as I am, I'm not sure if that's a lot of things.
Mr. Harris, something like seventy-five thousand, if anyone? Okay.
Yes, sir, I have my commission on that.
Oh, sorry.
And as we, as we move forward, because you're gonna be looking, if it's a hundred thousand, I don't have the appraisal in front of me, whenever you come to, um, approve a price that is somewhere between seventy-five and over higher, if the difference is more than ten percent of the, or correct, I mean, seventy-five is more than ten percent difference from a hundred, so whenever you go to approve that, it has to take a super majority vote of four to one to be able to approve that.
So we're, we need to be ten percent below the, if, without...
If you feel so below that threshold.
So we can do ninety thousand, if we can say it, and let's just do it at ninety thousand.
Mr. Chairman, I'll propose to knock down.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number sixteen, discuss a possible board action, solid waste, status clean details. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we provided the samples that we received back on the artwork, I need to have that, and we just need the board to make a decision on which one of them you would prefer. Now, Mr. Hale's idea of doing, requiring everyone to tattoo a barcode on the wrist just only out the window when they go back was more expensive instead of these steady claims.
He said tattoo.
I, I mean, I know it's more money, but I mean, he's one of these dudes, just more professional, I'll be honest with you.
I like, I like the, uh, the top, who was it, second page?
The orange and blue.
Orange and blue.
No.
They did indicate that it takes these to orange. Mr. Harris, we don't need any more than that.
I think orange and blue is fitting.
How would you deal with the year changing?
It has to change it each year. We mail these out every year because each year you have a new tax roll and have new people and new, yeah.
I just wanna explain some of it real quick. I mean, some, we got some new bases here on why we're doing this. Um, is the county, I mean, we get charged by the ton from, by waste management, our current contractor where we haul all of our garbage to, by the ton. And all of our county residents inside the county pay their solid waste assessment, which helps offset what we're getting charged for hauling garbage off. There's several loopholes in our current system and we're trying to eliminate one of them, and that is garbage from out of county coming into our collection sites and our citizens, our, our taxpaying dollars are having to pay all of that garbage off to waste management, Chester Island, Georgia, I mean, we have them, any of them located close to the county line. I got them down in Park Fifty-One, Mr. Hale's way or some in his district, I mean, we all got them, Stapleton, White, everybody's got them where surrounding counties, it's more convenient for those residents to drive across our county line and bring the garbage into our collection site, whereas we have to pay for that to be disposed of. So it's an attempt on this board's behalf to try to reduce that tonnage and save us money. Is it, do we all like it? Do we all are excited about it? Is it gonna be inconvenient? Yes, probably, but, I mean, we have to do something 'cause we're paying for other people's garbage to be disposed of and that's just on our tax pay.
I was gonna say, just clarify that they're paying for it.
I meant.
But I was saying, we've been dealing with this whole debate for a long time and we're trying our best.
And I would probably add, I mean, I'm speaking on y'all's behalf, but I'm thinking to my mind, if this thing turns out to be a flop or a pain, then we can always just reverse this decision and not do that. But going to these two here, I was thinking to you, I know you said that might be clear, honestly something that sticks out, you know, that's more accessible for our tenants to see is gonna speed that process up, or getting it out as well, but it's not too long yet.
Well, I'm fine with either one of you all out this, I should, I'd be like, or you and me.
I'm, I'm, I just wanna explain to the public as quick a while and we're trying to help reduce our tonnage a little bit that we're taking in if we shouldn't have to.
Mr. Harris, when will this take effect? When would we do this? Or when will we mail these out?
Since they can produce these, first, thanks for the, for the decals to be produced and the mailing to be done, we'd have to schedule a company for the mailing, but we're using the actual tax roll data from the tax collector's office on the units to pay the taxes, just as.
Two, two, two decals per assessment?
Correct.
Per paid assessment?
Correct.
And I guess just because some of our mailouts, or the last one wasn't very, um, likable by the community, would we get ahead of this and send something out, just a small letter to everyone?
There'll be a letter when it goes out, I mean, the postage is, is part of it, so there'll be a letter in there explaining that, you know, the recipient of this paid the household assessment, we're gonna explain why.
I think we agreed to put signs up at collections, that would be, that is, before it actually takes place.
You guys wanna see that letter before it goes out?
I would. I would like to see a draft of it. You just need a consensus on it, Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Butler, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Moses, Tucker, one four five eight one hundred seven five. I apologize not mentioning this earlier, but Sheriff Sam probably tested this, identifying , uh, on the tags, I think part of the reason we go into in God's trust or other options is when you identify vehicles that travel out of county, there's some, a couple of this areas that, uh, like you go to Miami, you got a Swan County tag on your car, which odds are increased that they're gonna be vandalized. If we put this third glaring thing on the windshield, it could increase the, uh, potential to be vandalized.
I think, I think they remove it easily.
Oh, the?
It's like one of those things, all the things stick it on.
They put it there and you just kill it.
Yeah, but can you keep putting on off and it keep sticking?
Yeah, you can just put it in your center console when you want, it'll put it on.
And not stick it if you want to, you just wanna stick it in the corner of the national zone.
Your car will.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. You need to just see consensus on that, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
We have more consensus on, on orange, orange and blue one?
I believe, I believe. Say golden blue or something, that is not orange. Golden blue, however you see it, anything that's orange.
Put that one.
You know, that's a blue.
That's a green.
Moving on, item number seventeen, discuss for possible board action, litter pickup options. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I resurrected the information that we had provided previously, so you have that, and then I updated an estimate on what caused if we were to hire the employees and buy the equipment, do this ourselves. You had the information from before and I also provided the bid results from previously. And if you recall, we had the company on page five of your packet, we had the company, the lowest bid last year, which again, I'm convinced we're convinced is no longer in business, but we had them extend their numbers out for five years to ensure that they incorporated the minimum wage mandate. So you had those numbers that were turned in last year. And then we reran the numbers, if you go to page, um, one, go to the bottom of that page, that would give you something to prepare with, that you were preparing. Commissioner Lynn and I spoke about the cost of fuel today and you'll see that I had used four dollars a gallon for gasoline at the time. I had no idea what the cost of gasoline was gonna be going forward, but that's a number that was used in this estimate. I also spoke to one of the companies that provide services for V O T. Um, I get some of their paperwork, they actually charge by the acre and they make their rounds just ahead of their tractors, so they go out and pick up trash and they go and then I guess they respond to calls thereafter, but in any event, it's correct or price. Um, one of the companies was interested in bidding that if we were planning to bid this thing again, but two companies that I got paperwork on, they're bidding theirs by the acre. We have to come up with a, with a estimate, how many acres of, count it right away. Then what comes into play is the question of frequency as well, um, do you run into a big number? The number that I used, if you look at the bottom of page one, I'll just go ahead and point out to you, those numbers reflect the increase, um, in minimum wage. The rate, if you look at the top of page two, you'll see that, um, in fact, I used the six full-time employees, but it starts at twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. The reason for that, uh, one of the reasons, primary reason for that was that if you incorporate, um, what the board has typically been doing for years, which is a one percent increase per year plus fifty cents an hour, that twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour will track very closely to what the minimum wage mandate will end up beating. Because you can see that in year five, it comes up to fifteen oh two, um, because the people that are currently minimum wage at ten dollars an hour are gonna pitch up at it, because they're gonna be getting a dollar raise per year in portions of the mandate. So that's what the labor number represents.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn.
Um, Mr. Harris, is there possibility or an option that we could, if we, if the board did agree to, to, to bid this service, could we bid it on like an as needed? I mean, what I'm saying is, 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 does the contractor require, all right, I, you know, I need hundred acres or I need a thousand acres? Can we bid it with the, with the contractor on an as needed basis, saying, okay, give us your acre bid, whatever, and then we, we award when you bidder, and then we say, all right, we won't road X, Y, Z, picked up first, and then they run the bid, they do, they go pick that up, send us a bill, okay, now do A, B, C, D, and E. And can we do it like that or do they require?
If we.
Minimum, maximum acres?
Well, I, I'm not sure what they're gonna require, but we would like the bid specification to provide the greatest flexibility and benefit to the county, so we could write it that way. I don't know one way or the other if that affects the price for them, and I don't know how they have to ramp up their number of personnel or accommodate something like this because I've got the impression that what they're doing for most part is managing, well, this is state rightways, they're staying ahead of their tractors, is what they're trying to do. In our case, that is enough. I'm telling you right now, I, I went to four roads that we picked up last week, they were several miles each. I waited three days and went back in there, drove those roads, if you wouldn't have known we'd been down those roads. So our bowling cycles, we might make three, three and a half cycles a year with tractors, but from the standpoint of litter, it's every day, you pick it up today and tomorrow, it's like you weren't even there. That's sad and unfortunate, but that's just what it is.
I, I was just wondering if we could, contractually, we could go to the contractor and have, either have them as a primary or as a secondary, you know, to help? I mean, if we, if the board goes, okay, we're gonna go to employees, or if it's falling out of trucks quicker and we can pick it up, can we have, can we put a contractual relationship in place to say, hey, we need some help? You know, or, but, but my only, my only problem with going with, my only concern, not a problem, my only concern with going with our own guys and our own equipment is, is, is now we're putting, you know, we're adding employees, we're adding equipment, we're adding maintenance, we're adding soft costs that all come along with that. I don't think that that twelve dollars an hour incorporates all of the soft costs that go along with the full-time employee. It's time off, insurance, working's gone.
They were extended out, if you look at that page.
That's what the twenty-nine, forty-two percentage is.
Right.
I got you.
Twenty-two percent for all those other costs. So the numbers that you're looking at at the bottom of page one incorporate all of those.
Okay, okay.
At year one, I mean, obviously you're picking up, you're setting up your equipment, so years two, three, five, those are your numbers.
Mr. Butler.
Just for what it's worth, I understand, I added employees, but that gives you the flexibility to send more even that day. If the policy says, hey, we don't follow my here versus, um, contractors, I mean, they, there's some of them, they pick them up, I mean, it could be a few guys, a few weeks, a few weeks, um, so let's give that a just, a common decision.
Mr. Chairman, that's kinda where we're going, what Commissioner Hale was, Tom says you said, well, Mr. Harris is not, be able to get those guys ahead of the mortgage, that that's what the contractor, versus the cabinet or, it'd just be hard to do the plan and schedule, because what you guys know when someone comes, they're trying to run, they don't stop.
Well, I'd just like to see the bid again anyway, just to see where it's at, if that's all right with you guys? I mean, but just to see where it's at, so we, because everything's changed since the last time we done it.
It may be crazy.
It may be that bad out of shape, you, you, you wouldn't even want to touch it, but I would just like that as a comparison.
What we can do now.
Is everybody else good with that?
No, you still gonna get those guys, you have some of those, those four-wheelers that they're gonna hit those boards or they just gonna go out there?
No, they're, they would have, well, a lot of them now going to the side-by-sides, they're sending two men out on the side of the side, dropping one hospital, a mile down the road, there's some works up there to fix the next one, another mile up the road.
A couple of weeks ago, I saw, I don't know, thirty-six, going west, so again, that's exactly what you said, they were back out there giving it to the truck.
It's constant, it's constant.
Mr. Harris, um, back when we talked about this, one of the dates, but I did speak to one of those, one, not a contractor that bid this, but a different contractor in that business, and, and he, he actually, his employee's walking, he said he, he covers more ground walking because, you know, there's a piece here and a piece over there, that buggy or that ATV has to circle around or like, I mean, he, he's promised walking was more efficient, but.
Well, I think that's what, I think that's what they do, what they do is take your four-wheeler, dropping the first man off, there's two men on it, not the four-wheeler, on the side-by-side, because I talked to companies that did that too, they're dropping one man off, they're taking, the second man is driving a mile away and he's getting out parking with them, and he's, he's continuing to walk another mile, and this one catches up. And what they're doing is picking up the, the bags, it gets in the way to pick up the bags and get them in one location, a pile up, so somebody comes with the truck and the trailer, loads all that stuff up. I'm sure there are different ways of doing it.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see a bid, I mean, I think that where the world's headed today, what's going on, I just hate to, um, to commit to these big numbers without seeing a bid on.
We can, we'll bid it again, there's no problem.
We gonna do it by the acre this time?
I can do it by the acre.
That's the way, I think, I, I think that's probably a better route to go.
We can, we're gonna try that and we're gonna recognize that we're gonna have to do our best to estimating the acres, the right-of-way widths, or all over the place.
That's the only problem with none of ours is really consistent, from right to rude.
We've got white ones and we've got narrow ones.
Will by the mile work or?
I don't know, I don't know, I'd have to talk to some of the companies and see if they're just gonna bid by the mile.
And could we put a spot on the bid for both, you know, bid it by the acre or by the mile?
Sure.
Maybe some of them wants to bid it one way versus the other? Just give it some more options.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. The guy that I talked to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Harris.
I was just gonna say, um, I, I'll do whatever you want, because I don't have a problem with bidding, but I wanna be very clear because there's plenty of contractors that study what we're talking about. I'm not interested in just getting somebody to see if we can get bids, I mean, I'm interested in letting them do the work if they're reasonable, I don't want them to just think, which, oh, I don't, you know, get your numbers, just get your numbers and then put their friend in, or them not think they're serious, I mean, I'm, just because I wanted to hire some help, I don't have a problem with bidding, and if it's the price. I'm sure there are different places to do it.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see a bid, I mean, I think that where the world's headed today, what's going on, I just hate to commit to these big numbers without seeing a bid on.
We can, we'll bid it again, there's no problem.
We're going to do it by the acre this time?
I can do it by the acre.
That's the way, I think, I think that's probably a better route to go.
We can, we're going to try that, and we're going to recognize that we're going to have to do our best to estimate the acres. It's our right-of-way width, or all over the place.
That's the only problem with none of ours is really consistent, from right to right.
We've got wide ones and we've got narrow ones.
Will by the mile work, or?
I don't know, I don't know, I'd have to talk to some of the companies and see if they're going to bid by the mile.
Could we put a spot on the bid for both, you know, bid it by the acre or by the mile?
Sure.
Maybe some of them wants to bid it one way versus the other. Just give you some more options.
The guy that I talked to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'll do whatever you want to do, I don't have a problem with bidding it. But I want to be very clear, because there's plenty of contractors that study what we're talking about. I'm not interested in just getting somebody to see if we can get bids. I mean, I'm interested in letting them do the work if they're reasonable. I don't want them to just think, which, oh, I don't, you know, get your numbers, just get your numbers, and then put their foot in, or them not think we're serious. I mean, I'm, just because I wanted to hire some help, I don't have a problem with bidding it, and if it's, the price is fair, and.
Well, that's what, I definitely.
The conversation we had is just like, let's collect, let's make them do some work for us, and you know what I'm saying.
That's not what I have in mind anyway, it's, my thing is to not only have it as a comparison, but if it comes in anywhere close to what we can do it for, I'm all about it.
I just, I just wanted to be clear with that, from what I was saying, I would support a bid, and if it's reasonable, then we can go that route.
I mean, I understand where you're coming from, and you don't want it to look like we're just fishing for numbers.
Right, I want, and I want to get some bids, I mean, I would add, it's just not getting some bids, I mean, that's the thing. So I want people to take it seriously, yeah, we got to find a solution to this.
Do you need a motion for that, Mr. Harris, or is this considered?
No, sir, I'll go ahead and prepare bids better than that. If you look at page six, that middle column on page six is what the numbers were last year when we did. And you'll see that even those numbers are considerably higher than the numbers that I have on this, should be on page one. Now, there may be someone out there that doesn't, but we did not bid it by the acre or the mile at that time, so we might get much better results that way. And I'm going to be optimistic, believe that that's going to happen. So we just bid it by the mile and by the acre and see what comes back as.
We're all in agreement on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number eighteen, update on grant applications, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I want to spend a little time talking about grants, because as time passes, a lot of Commissioners aren't familiar with where we've been with grant applications and requests for funding for the state. Commissioner Fleming does, because he's been here a long time. But it's been a long, Marge was asked to try bringing money to this county, but it takes us to do the things that I think most of us agree that we need to try to do. First thing I want to say is that when I got here years ago, the county really wasn't applying for a whole lot of grants. And we didn't have much out working on grants. One thing that has been a big plus over the years, though, is out at the airport, I met Mr. Frank, who was a consultant. I think that company name has changed now, but Greg Scott has worked with him for a number of years. I think Greg would agree that he's built in tremendous, a tremendous help workforce on grants for improvements out of the airport. We've done some, that's spectacular things out there. And Greg has also worked hard to give grants in for parks and recreation purposes, and you see those from time to time, they come across. And we approve those, and we've made a lot of improvements. Chief Hand has worked over at Fire Rescue, he and the, Tim White, on any number of grants. And a lot of those come through FEMA and just other agencies when we have grant opportunities. They're typically not extremely large grants, a lot of times they're for equipment and things, but my point is that we try to take advantage of all the opportunities we can to apply for grants and state appropriations requests, in order to get money, I'm here to do the things that various Commissioners have talked about over the years. On the economic development side, though, a number of years ago, when we were talking about building Catalyst Site, we recognized that we had a huge need, very little money. I think at that time, the Commissioners had indicated that they had set aside about seven million dollars is what they figured they had to appropriate for the improvements of the Catalyst Site. Today, I can tell you, I'm convinced that we've probably spent over 23 or 24 million dollars out there with Catalyst Site. But at least two-thirds of that has come from grants, or that's a guess, because things have changed over time. But when we originally started with Catalyst Site, working through the Department of Economic Opportunity, I just want to say that when you're working on economic development grants, you have to tie those back to job creation. Your applications that you're making with grant agencies require you to try to speculate on how many new jobs are going to be created as a result of the improvements that are going to occur with grant funding. So that's what we did back at that time. And the original sources of funding that we believed that we could apply for totaled about 12 million dollars. We've actually secured and spent over 16 million dollars in grants out there. One of the reasons for that, when we got out there, we discovered that soils are much worse than had been anticipated, and we needed enormous volumes of clean filters put on the site. Probably most of you know by now, we've repaired over 30 sinkholes out there, and those retention ponds, that cost a lot of money. And then after we built or reconstructed 169, the semis started coming in from a different direction. They started coming off the stagecoach and down 167, and destroyed that pretty quickly. So thankfully, we were able to go to DOD and get more money from them, and reconstructed that as well. We built rail spur, we built the county's first water plant out there, and we did all of that with grant funding. As you know, we just finished that railroad crossing, and I'm thankful, I mean, that was a long time coming, but that's really the last piece of some of the original work that was planned for the Catalyst Site. And then you know that more recently, a couple of years ago, we obtained the grant funding for the water and sewer plants out there at I-75. And then we came up short, so we got the state revolving fund money, and that totaled 7.7 million dollars. We got a generator that FEMA paid for for $45,000. Commissioner Hales was there with the grant that we obtained for the fire station out there, I think that was 700,000. And we're still working on that. And then recently, we started working on another round of grants, and we applied for grant proceeds to help us build something in Douglas Center. And I know that Mr. Ford is here this evening, he worked long and hard with Shannon on that application. In fact, if I were to ask Mr. Ford to stand up, he'd have to agree, that he was taller when he started that process with us, as was Shannon. But those two men did everything in the world they could in that application to try to make sure that we were awarded the funding. And then they followed up on the conference call, which I think occurred last week, when the decisions were being made on who was going to be awarded the money, and we didn't get the money. There were under 52 applicants, and 52 were awarded funding. Our application was denied, it was $840,000. And we were actually believing that we had a good application, because we had put our match money in. If you remember, when we discussed that, we had money that we already had set aside, but we still didn't get it. Now, those two men will tell you, and tell you stories off the record probably, about their opinions on how those applicants were scored and where the money went. I'm not going to go into that right now, but I'll just say that it's very challenging when you're listening to some of those conversations and what's occurring, and you're observing where the money is actually going, and you compare it back to your application, and we knew we had a good application. But clearly, the majority were not willing to fund it, to apply for that money. I also had a conversation with Sheriff just a week and a half ago about our state appropriations request for a new EOC. We had requested $2 million, and that request was denied. I just found that out, I spoke to Representative Brandon a week or so ago, and he indicated that the state's position is that the state should be funding EOCs for the counties. I know that most of us struggle with that, because when a lot of these hurricanes occurred in South Florida, they steer everyone up here at these rural counties to get out of the path of that, and we've taken our share of those people that struggle with communications, and that EOC is our little antiquated building, where we're trying to maintain communications. But at the same time, we have to evacuate that building when hurricanes come through here, so it's tough, and we're continuing to work at it. In fact, I told Representative Brandon that we'll just continue to apply until hopefully one day it finally does work. We applied for $32 million for broadband expansion in the county. That was a competitive grant, we were denied. It's not surprising, they had far more requests than they had money, so we were denied on that, but we've already made contact. The state of Florida has $800 million for expansion of broadband, and we've already contacted that office. Interestingly, they've got a pile of money, but they don't have anyone in the office to set up a program yet. So they have two people, they don't have an application process yet, but we plan to work on that. That's one of the reasons I was excited to hear about us going ahead and potentially securing a lobbyist to represent us and help stay on top of that application when it occurs, with the hope that we can be awarded the funding for expansion of broadband in the county. We applied for, this was a long shot, I came in here and asked you, told you about an opportunity to apply for a CDPG grant for a multipurpose building, and probably most of you know by now that we I was actually contacted on Sunday evening. I had three or four texts and phone calls from Tallahassee. I was wondering who got put in jail on a Sunday, but I made a call back to the governor's office and discovered that we were going to be awarded $5 million on the request we made for the multipurpose building. This is a decent representation of what we're going to receive, but it was just yesterday, I think, that I received an email saying that they're sending us an award letter, but we still won't have the agreement. And I share that with you because these grants have lots of built-in, I'm going to call them opportunities, because they will really stretch you. We have a tight timeline on this funding. What I believe occurred, this is federal funding that was sent to the state of Florida, like other states, and it took a while for, like this broadband money, it's worth finally getting awarded. So now, I don't know when the state actually received the money, but we've got a very short timeline for trying to produce this building. Shannon and I had a conference, or a Zoom call with the administrators of that funding out of Tallahassee. We talked about a number of minor issues, but the biggest one that we have to deal with is timing all this and trying to get this thing completed. One of the issues that we struggle with is peculiar circumstances that they create when they send us these agreements. One of the first things that we have to do, I think we have two years to build this building. And under normal circumstances, that may sound okay, but we know that there are issues with supply chain right now. But before I can do anything, I have to undertake an environmental survey. And that takes a minimum of six months, it could take eight months, which means I can't do anything. Some may think, well, can't you confirm they have the design work done on the building so that you're ready to pull the permit? When the environmental survey is completed, the answer is no. We've had that conversation with them, they don't let us go ahead and do the design, we can't even procure the services of an engineer. We can't do anything until that environmental survey comes back. It really isn't all environmental survey, it's actually an opportunity for all state federal agencies to comment on what we're planning to do out there. Part of this environmental survey, but it takes a lot of time. So if you're going to be looking for updates near term, we won't be doing anything except waiting for the environmental survey. We're going to have to undertake that, I'll come back and procure those services, but that's the first thing we can be allowed to do once we have the agreement, and it's fully executed. So the clock is ticking, and we know we've got a short timeline, and we can't do anything right now. There are other really peculiar things associated with these grants. Once we get an agreement, when we get started, all the processes, which we've talked about many times on procuring engineering services and otherwise, they all take a great deal of time, and then there's a tremendous amount of paperwork involved. Commissioners, I don't know if you can see it, but those sitting in attendance will see the paperwork. There's six notebooks on that table in front of me. Those six notebooks and all of that paperwork that was created in our office are associated with the smallest CDPG grant that we have had in the last 10 years. That was a $750,000 grant, all that paperwork in those six notebooks. And that is a duplication, that's actually that much paperwork that was produced, you don't hit a button and it just fits it out. But we're going to be doing something that's $5 million, and we've got libraries full of these notebooks and paperwork. It's a tremendous amount of man hours trying to put this stuff together and track it. And then I'm going to briefly mention the, in fact, let me point something out on the Douglas Center. I mentioned that earlier, and then we got denied on that, that wasn't the first time. We had actually previously applied for funding for the Douglas Center, I'm thinking it was four or five years ago, and we weren't successful with that either, but we just continue to go back and we have those opportunities. So I'm going to briefly comment on the CARES funding and ARPA funding. You know, when the CARES Act came along, it's interesting how the federal government, through their agencies, made these announcements. You know, there was an announcement that everybody was going to get tons of money. And for those of you that remember, I came in and made a recommendation that we not waste into that so quickly. And it was because in the CARES Act, the initial guidance that was provided, they said that, one, we had all the federal regulations we had to comply with, and one of those regulations is the Stafford Act, which says that we can't duplicate services. And everyone was saying, well, a lot of cities are giving money away. In fact, the consultant that spoke in the last meeting talked a lot about setting up programs to give money away in another county somewhere in your last meeting. I think that was when they received, was that the last meeting?
That's all county.
Yeah, they talked about helping establish programs and monitoring that, distributing the funds. Well, we didn't do that, because the initial guidance said that we had to pay all that money back if they discovered that we didn't follow and comply with all the federal requirements. Well, we knew what the federal requirements were, because it's the same requirements associated with all that paperwork on that table right there. And the Stafford Act was one of them. And we couldn't duplicate services. Now, the best way that we came up with trying to ensure there wasn't a duplication of services or giving money more than once to an entity that could go to any number of state agencies, and we see federal funding associated with CARES, the best mechanism we could think of was to track all those distributions by a social security number or federal ID number. The problem was that there wasn't a single agency distributing money that was obtaining that information, because it wasn't a requirement. And what was worse, if they were obtaining the information, no one has the access to cross-reference that data if we had it. And we tried, we called every agency under the sun, trying to find out if that could be done, and the answer was always no. So we held off. Now, a year later, we discovered that we weren't the only ones that had that concern. We knew that we couldn't afford to pay all that money back. If it was determined in an audit, and these audits can occur over the next seven years, if it was determined in an audit there was a duplication of services, because we gave money to someone and were receiving it from another agency, and we couldn't pay it back. So a year later, the Treasury Department came out with guidance and said, well, we're going to change this approach on giving this money away. Cities and counties, you can take the money as a reimbursement for your labor costs associated with safety personnel, and that's what we did. And they said clearly that the presumption was that those people were involved in dealing with, you know, the issues associated with COVID. And that's how we obtained the money. And then we weren't worrying about all the issues associated with giving money away. By that time, the COVID virus was largely over, and we didn't have anything else to do with that except receive the money as a reimbursement of our expenses for safety personnel. So we did. And you've spent some of that money, you bought the radios for the sheriff and some other things. With the ARPA funds, the first guidance, when it came along, was very similar to the earlier guidance that came out of CARES, except they pretty clearly said that they weren't going to do the same thing they had ultimately done with the CARES Act funding. Well, we believed them, but one of the qualified projects that we knew that we could do was water and sewer, so that's how we started, why we started on the extension of the water and sewer down County Route 137. But lo and behold, everyone was anticipating the adoption of this final guidance through the Treasury Department, the final. And finally came. And one of the changes that they made very clear was that we could take that money as a reimbursement of lost revenue. And the presumption is for cities and counties that you lost revenue because of the virus. Now, we started by communicating to them that we were going to build a water and sewer project, which we're still planning to do. But my request of the board is that you allow us to change our paperwork and report to them that we're changing that to accepting all of the funds as lost revenue because it alters significantly our approach to some of the paperwork that we have to do. We're still going to have to do at least that much paperwork, but it'll be different than handling it as a project. And we still have to tell them what we're using the money for. But it's just a different approach. It's going to make it easier on us. That is the issue that I contacted Neighbors Giblein on and got a legal opinion on back in January when I first read the guidance. That gentleman held a big thick pack with all the flags in it the other day. Well, mine and Shannon's comp is about that thing because we want to respect the pages that requires reporting. And then I reached out to Neighbors Giblein, the law firm in Tallahassee, and got their opinion on the approach of switching that to a lost revenue reimbursement under that presumption that they've given us in the Treasury Department's guidance. Because it's going to save Shannon and I some time and a lot of grief in the way that we approach the reporting side of this. And again, all of this stuff is audited for five to seven years, but it'll really help us to do that. So that's my plan right now on that unless the board feels differently about it. Otherwise, we just have to identify projects and spend it specifically on the projects. And then we've got just a different approach to the way that we be reporting. Over the new guidance, my recommendation, the request would be that we switch. And we're trying to figure out how to do that. There's a provision for that paperwork, but we're trying to figure out how to do that prior to the first reporting period that we have to respond to. So that's the request, commissioners. You know, we have received part of the money. We don't have all of the money. It'll be coming. But my request is that you allow us to switch our approach rather than to identify projects to the lost revenue because they make, and this gentleman spoke to this when he was here a couple of weeks ago. When they changed the guidance, they made a standard allowance of ten million dollars with that presumption. And our allowance was, I think it's a little over eight million dollars that we fall within that ten million dollar benchmark, and it's just going to make it better for us.
Is there a time limit on spending that money?
Yes. I believe it has to be completely wrapped up by 2026. I think by 2024, we have done everything identified that we're doing. But I think it all has to be spent by 2026.
That's with the ARPA and the CARES?
With the ARPA. CARES, no, CARES is different. No, there's no deadline on CARES that we have. But we took it as a reimbursement. That money was already spent. It was different with ARPA. They came out with these new guidance that they hadn't tied to safety personnel like they did the other funding. But they went ahead and made the presumption that every city and county lost revenue due to the pandemic.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you all, you and the staff, for getting us that five million dollar building. That's pretty good news for a county our size, and I appreciate all the hard work on that. I don't want to let that go unnoticed. And I'd like to get a picture of all of us with a pink check. Does anybody else agree?
No, I would agree here, second that. Thanks staff for all the hard work. That'll be a great project for this community, something we need. We've got to work that out for you, it's been twenty-four months, but haven't pulled off. You're talking about the ARPA funds on the lost revenue, right, not CARES. But for me, and I'm not questioning staff after Neighbors and Giblein, but for me, this is one of those situations where it's unique. It's a federal situation, and there are tons of money coming. I mean, this is a good example of what the other firms spoke, on their name, the CPAs and attorneys. I mean, this is an opportunity. Thomas Howell and Ferguson, where they make you come in and make sure that we capitalize and don't miss an opportunity and do something that might shoot us in the foot for additional funding coming down the pipe later. A firm like that might be very helpful in helping us play our cards, in their opinion. I mean, they're doing it all across the state. I'd be interested to see, you know, what they're recommending to other small counties like ours to do and how to play that card.
These are my thoughts. Everything that I've read so far gives me the impression that a large percentage are building infrastructure projects. We are actually doing what the first guidance said, we're just taking the money in a different fashion. So we're still, because we have to report to them what we're spending the money on. And one thing they wanted to make sure local governments weren't doing was propping up pension funds and paying off debt, a number of other things. So they're trying to ensure that they want to, local governments report what they are spending money on. But we actually started with an approved project, a listed project from the very beginning. And we're proceeding with that. We're just reporting it differently now, who will be.
So do you need a motion for that? To have it on the way we're treating the funds, or do you need a consensus?
I would prefer that you just vote and give us the authorization to go ahead and proceed with our reporting, as required that we report and we're taking it as lost revenue in accordance with Treasury Department guidance.
Any other discussion regarding the motions? Or is anybody on the table?
Am I educated enough?
Yeah, I don't have a problem moving forward or making a motion, but I do to the degree that we're not, just make sure that other staff does, as Commissioner Hans said, we're just not missing the opportunities or not having. My question would be, how many times can we, I guess, change how appropriate how we're using this money? Is it just a one-time?
It would be a one-time.
One-time opportunity?
Yeah, it's just a one-time opportunity. I mean, we're not the funding to fund projects. That's what we're going to do. I just don't have to handle the reporting in the same exact fashion that I do with the regular, if it were just a project only. I mean, they made the change, we didn't. I'm just taking advantage of it because I know how much paperwork Shannon and I have to be trying to cope with these things. So when I sent the request, Neighbors Giblein asked them, and they agreed. And my point was that it's going to simplify things some for us. And they agreed. Because they're familiar with the same guidance that came out, they went straight to it and cited that. So they're agreeing. And that's what I'm trying to accomplish.
Sure, but we've always taken their advice.
Yeah, and let me just point one other thing out. Even with the CARES Act, and it'll come up again with ARPA funds, Mr. Powell on the CPA will be on top of all of that. All of that is evaluated on a regular basis as part of our audits that are done every year. And we communicated everything to him through the clerk's office and with the clerk's office on CARES Act. And everything will be handled the same way with the ARPA funds.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any special time to move on to go ahead and get staff, let them move forward, what we're doing.
I would like to speak to it real quick. I'm supportive of what you're saying. I would just like to say, before I send his motion, I appreciate what Commissioner Hans said about, you know, having some other companies possibly look at it. But I have, you were leading to it, just getting some outside advice. But I think I'm going to say this for this time. I may change my mind as we move forward, as we all do. And when businesses start spending money on the lobbyists, I'm going to ride the horse that got us here. That's got us that check over there, and that's our staff. I'm going to ride them for right now. I'm proud of them, and I'm not taking anything away from you all. I know you made it clear you're not, you know, second guessing them or anything, but it's just a point in time right now. I got to stay with them boys. And we'll take a vote on it and see what we're able to, but I got to stay with them this time. I'm proud of that all that has had the job, and that can happen every day. So.
And I'll second you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming II, by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor of. I propose a motion. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I just want to clarify so staff knows I wasn't taking a jab at them at all.
No, that's why.
Discrediting any, any.
That's why I spoke to you. I recognize that you weren't. I recognize you weren't, but I mean, I just wanted to, I just.
I just wasn't, I didn't, I'm going to be the person that I'm not educated on ARPA. I wasn't edu, you know, not very educated on the route, the good route, the bad route, the easier route, the convenient route. I'm not educated on any of that. That's why I was, I need somebody to educate me on.
I don't want you to leave here today. I don't want anybody to leave here. I mean, that's why I spoke to you, you made clear that you wasn't doing that. But I just wanted to make clear that I had a good thought, but I wasn't doing it. And we agree on that. I mean, that's it. We're all the same.
Well, I just thought, I didn't want them thinking, maybe I've come across wrong.
I just.
I didn't take this lightly.
And I also want to say, Ford, thank you. I appreciate you and Shannon working all that. I know it was a long, drawn-out thing, and this morning we didn't get it. I know it worked a lot after you guys tried, so thank you.
I'll leave it there. Speaking of, Mr. Chairman, just speaking of that and the Douglas Center and Mr. Paris, is there something to turn around and go right back to the board or? We'll continue to look. We applied previously. I think it was under a historical designation and a grant opportunity associated with historical significance. But we'll just continue to watch. Opportunity's done, we'll jump in and bring it to the board and we'll apply for it. This is one that came across an email, this last one. And we thought we had an excellent, I still maintain we had an excellent application. And there are some issues that I'm not going to go into publicly. I'm confident that Mr. Ford and Shannon both have opinions on the way that this story is handled. But having said that, we will certainly be watching for other opportunities to multiply again. By that time, going to bring it forward, future opportunities, we'll get back at it one more time. I do want to say this, though. Mr. Ford did a tremendous job. I mean, he has, he has put together all of the history that none of my staff had. And he had worked with Mr. Massey previously when we applied. But I know that he and Shannon put a tremendous effort into making sure that all of the information was in that application. And I'm confident we had an excellent application. It just didn't happen. So I too appreciate it tremendously.
I appreciate Mr. Ford, I mean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Fleming and I said, we've been on that same thing with the Douglas Center, trying to look forward and do everything. Mr. Ford, I mean, that's out of nowhere for some years now. And I know one thing about you, you're not a quitter. And this is just a little setback. We're going to get there. We've just got to keep working at it. But we appreciate everything you do.
All right, if there's nothing else, we're going to the additional agenda items. We have two tonight. Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Tom, I, who do you want? I have a short item. You're kind of skipping me on the other there.
I did, I'm sorry, you can move forward.
I have just a short item. What I have is for you to consider a settlement agreement of eviction action that we had to file out at the airport. Now, the particular tenant indicated he didn't have to sign an agreement at the airport because he already had a five-year agreement, subdestination with the county. And we got all the way down to the week before the hearing was set for the eviction action. And we agreed, he and me and this counsel agreed that he would go ahead and pay all of the back rent and be out of there. And as a matter of fact, he's already vacated, and we already have the money. But paperwork always lags behind and everything. And so what I'm really asking you to do is go ahead and approve this settlement and then authorize Mr. Scott to be able to sign the settlement agreement at the end.
So we.
A motion to approve the settlement and then authorize Mr. Scott to sign the settlement agreement.
Mr. Scott, you good?
I'll, I'll, I'll move to Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton II, by Neighbors Giblein, all in favor of. All of those things.
Can you be certain?
Now, we move on to the additional agenda items. Item number one, discuss a possible board action. Material specification for installation, County Route 137, water and sewer, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I think probably most of us would agree that we're under a time front trying to get these utilities installed down there on 137 because we have a customer who at some point is going to be ready to hook up, and we need to be prepared. And in fact, we took money from that customer early on. In any event, we had gone to bid. There were certain material specifications in the bid package. The contract has been awarded to Music Construction. Mr. Music is convinced, and I wouldn't disagree, that he can install utilities quicker using a different material specification than what was in the packet. The North Florida Professional Services evaluated the proposal, put comments together, which you have in your packet. And I just need the board to consider the proposal and make a decision so that we can move forward. Mr. Music needs to order something. And I won't go into all the details of this because it's just a different pipe, different specification, and the engineers made comments on that. We sent all of them. Hopefully, we've had an opportunity to do that, which you can make a decision on before you want to go with this.
I'll speak up shortly. I read the fourth, Mr. Fleming. I take his comments. I take another word of his comments here. At the end of time, he calls and says that it would be satisfactory from a formal standpoint. So with that being said, with savings to the county and time, and then if we get material and time and fashion, I don't have a problem with all of them, but you must really follow them. I think that's special.
You don't. Mr. Bailey, can I get you a moment for a minute? Name of the address, please.
I need more professional services, like to the floor.
Oh. I get in the end, you say, it's kind of just what we do here. But when I was reading through this, there's some, the HDP E pipe is welded versus, I guess, slip connect on the PVC pipe.
Yes, exactly.
What I'm reading. And so it has to be welded, and it has to be inspected. I guess somebody, my question is, who does the inspections on the wells? Is that the contractor doing his own, or is that an outside firm doing that?
The county would have your inspector on the job doing the work. As far as the, where we're doing P1, we don't have any, there's going to be an inspector on the job. When you're doing HDP E, you have a certified welder that's doing that work. You have a certified welder doing that work. You also have a machine that records and logs those wells. So all of that record is kept and maintain that information for the life of the project.
And also, you hear you say that you may want, if you do decide to go to the HDP E route because of, I guess, failing wells or whatnot. because of, I guess, failing wells or whatnot, you would want a longer warranty period on the, from.
That would be my suggestion, is that there will be an extended warranty, uh, to do that. I haven't found anything specific in the industry as far as what that term should be. But I have seen where they ask contractors to maintain their documentation for at least five years. My suggestion, not the warranty's five years, but I have seen those, those indications.
Well, also on the, the, I don't understand the branch taps, so I, I get with the pipe, you can put a T in and run the same size pipe in another direction. But you can't do the same thing with this?
You can do taps. The, the, uh, when you go to do, that line is twelve inch line, twelve inch pipe. We can do a ten inch tap onto it, no problem, do it eight, no problem, and you still come down. When you go to a twelve to a twelve, uh, there are special considerations you got to deal with. We have, we have one manufacturer says they can do it, but I've got another manufacturer that says they can't go to a twelve, a twelve, they have to do ten or under.
So, I'm sorry if I'm, it seems like I'm running the show here, I'm not, I'm just curious about some things and, and, uh, so you say you're running it now one thirty-seven, and the only time you need to tap off of it with a twelve inch tap, I'm assuming, is if you want to run down another county road with that supply?
That would be correct.
So that would be the only time you'd need that twelve inch?
That would be what we anticipate unless you had a very, very large water user that came in along one thirty-seven somewhere, or they needed.
Where you'd need to tap with a twelve inch to get to.
Of that size.
Well, with most of your stuff, what would be the actual size you would need to tap into it?
I'm saying generally what we say is anywhere from an eight to possibly a ten.
So.
You gotta have, you gotta have a minimum of a six for a fire, for a fire main. I will tell you this, most fire mains you can't carry enough water on six inch line, you know, that's the minimum state, you need at least an eight to handle a fire.
Well, if you as being the engineer, if we decided to go to the HDPE route, are you, are you still standing behind the engineering, is my question, if we changed from one material to another? Not, not so much the, I'm just saying the engineering on your end would stay the same, correct? You just drawing out the line and specifying and.
There's no change from, from my standpoint.
I get you're not warrantying it.
So, that's your contractor's responsibility.
So, uh, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question.
Mr. Bloom, Mr. Bader, just, just there if they can't hear in the background, is there anything we can do, put a microphone, or with mine, or load it? One of us.
Things are connected, middle of the thing, it's like it's not, it's working, but it ain't working.
Tap the end of it.
Anything better?
That's good, I think you gotta be a moment.
Are you?
Just lean into it.
Can you hear that?
Nope.
Yeah, does that reach a little bit?
How about that?
Oh, Mr. Bader, I'm not familiar with HDPE pipe. My question is, is, um, I mean, Mr. Norris and I sit on a Zoom call every month. We truly, we certainly like to give news to tell them that we've, uh, shortened our construction period. Uh, some concerns on our end about that. But, um, on the, my question is, on the longevity of the pipe. I mean, I'm spending tax, we're spending taxpayers' dollars that we're responsible for. I would ask that, as far as ten, twenty, thirty years down the road, as far as longevity, which one of these products is a superior product?
My opinion, as far as overall superiority, would probably be PVC. Uh, it's a harder material than the, uh, HDPE. But I don't know it's significant enough to say that it's half, it's not, it's not gonna be like that. They're gonna be, be somewhat close, but the, uh, the PVC will handle the higher pressures than what HDPE will handle. Now, that being said, our pressure shouldn't be that high except for we have water hammer. Whenever you have, uh, sudden stops of water pressure in, in the lines, you can have high surface pressures at that point in time. But the, uh, the HDPE is, is rated for occasional use of that, but it's only rated at one twenty-five where the, uh, the PVC's rated at two hundred and thirty-five, I believe.
And then I'd follow it up with, um, long-term maintenance. Would you, is one more favorable than the other?
I think PVC's been more common for our operation. That's what you have in other parts of the county, uh, is a PVC material. That's what you're operating out there at, uh, the, uh, Fender Holt's site.
Catalyst.
Uh, at the Catalyst site. If you do HDPE, there would be some training that would have to be done to either county personnel, or you'd end up having to hire a contractor that had experience doing HDPE.
On the repairs.
On repairs.
And those are the wells that you.
Yes, sir.
Have moved it to.
When you put a tap, just a regular tap for a business or whatever, into that HDPE pipe, is it the same for the PVC as it is for the HDPE, or is it two different things? I mean, you put a T in the line if you're tapping for a, say a smaller, a four inch or a two inch, or whatever the case may be.
The preferred method on the HDPE is to go all welds. You can do, uh, mechanical joints, but, uh, the preference is just to weld the PVC would be always the mechanical joint.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bloom.
I don't know if Mr. Music can respond, but he's contracted.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bader, they did it. I think we got confused, you know, but you're telling me that PVC would last longer than the HDPE pipe?
I think PVC would be more durable.
I, Mr. Chairman, you know, now I'd like Mr. Music to come and, uh, you know, you're gonna work. But he's satisfied, but I know we're gonna, it, it would get repaired, and then something come up, but I, I, I would much rather have longevity. And, and, and the dollar now, if, if Mr. Lass, taxpayers save taxpayers some money, let me know what we, what we getting ourselves a dollar there. Music, you know that.
Name and address.
Ask Music, one zero nine two one, fifty-four street. Gentlemen, the only time I've ever seen HDPE used in practical purposes is direct drillers or that's, that's what they bore on the interstates and everywhere else and, you know, that's. HDPE is, is the use when they do jack, jacking bores and stuff on the interstates. It's been a long round, a long time. We've never used it as a direct burial in this general area, because it's never been price competitive ever before. But here's what you'll find. HDPE, when you weld it together, and I have been educated more today in one page than I've ever been educated for my life on HDPE pipe. When we went into this, this was about time. Time was most important. Money was a secondary issue. But with HD, this HDPE, not only are we saving time, three months, but we're also saving a hundred thousand dollars on top of it. That's win-win for both sides. But here's what we learned today, and I, we've sent a lot of this information late Saturday with Mr. Bader of, to bring him forward on some of this. We didn't talk just to pipe manufacturers that's trying to sell us this pipe. We went to the end users that's using this pipe now to see, guys, I don't want to be the guinea pig. Y'all don't want to be the guinea pig. I certainly don't want to be the guinea pig, I guarantee. You'll find that City Thomasville's went to it exclusively. They don't use plastic pipe anymore whatsoever. City Valos, all new construction, HDPE pipe. City Brunswick, all new construction, HDPE pipe. What they have found that is so much more durable, HDPE pipe, when it's in a stress situation, will actually flex, where it doesn't fall apart. They, my, my staff, I saw and watched videos today, which I'm not a YouTube guy, I've been on YouTube in my life. But actually in areas that are earthquake prone, and when earthquakes struck, the only pipe that survived was the HDPE pipe. We're not an earthquake zone, that doesn't, here's, but here's what does. You can, you can wet tap this with conventional. What you put on, when you wet tap a pipe, you put on a mechanical sleeve with a bell on the end of it, and then you take a drill and ready to wet tap it. That's, when you make, when you PVC pipe that way, you can do HDPE pipes. And, um, my main work, my main focus on, one of the reasons I don't use it is not only can we do it quicker and cheaper, but also because all y'all is know one thirty-seven, that's a wetting. Right now, this is a dry, and we're going in the dries two months of the year. April May's typically our dry times. If we wait five months, which is what my conventional pipe is, we're back into July. It'll rain on us every day. This HDPE, we'll, we'll stretch it out, weld it together, and we're not welding it ourselves, we're using a pipe certified from the manufacturer to weld our pipe with. We'll stretch it out, lay it right beside the road, we're gonna dig a hole, and we're gonna add a water, no matter what it is, coming on with it. Like I said, I've been educated way more today than I've ever been educated. But I really believe if we ever get used to it on it, we'll, this may well be the way of the future is how we're gonna go. Greg's not real familiar with it, I'm certainly not real familiar with it, but now, guys, if they use it on the interstates everywhere, they'll use it on the interstate because it's flexible. When they weld together, it's one continuous piece of pipe. It does have no sleeves, it doesn't have any joints. It's a continuous one piece of pipe.
Is it like a bell?
No, sir.
That slides in, or is it just butt welded, or?
It's welded together.
It's good.
It'll be there, even now, everybody that's reading, gone, gone.
Do they X-ray that, or anything?
They actually, this machine, this machine actually comes with a, it actually has a, what do we call it? The machine that welds together.
Sensor on?
Yeah, it, it actually, it actually comes with a sensor that tells you when it's done and you hold it.
The machine's pretty substantial, but what they do is basically goes in there and heats both, ends the pipe, and, and they've got hydraulics in there that basically pushes them together. And they hold pressure on them to where that weld cures. And once the weld cures, and, and it, it, it catalogs the whole thing, so it can tell you if there's a void in there or anything like that.
So you know it's welded in one sense.
And you, then you test, you test them every so often. You don't have to test every one.
Right.
You test every so often. You can pull them apart, or you can cut them apart, and verify it's the same way it's placed. That's the way, that's the way that system works.
If you want to do, they do, they also have what they call electromagnetic. Is that the right way to say it?
Electrofusion.
Electrofusion couplings. And electrofusion couplings, it wraps the same gr- the same way as a mechanical coupling goes. But Greg was talking about having to put a weld, weld machine in the hole. That's not the way they do it. They wrap this thing around, it has the same bell on it, they have a little unit like about a suitcase size, and it'll actually read the pipe to make sure it's clean. Because when you're welding this stuff together, it's gotta be squeaky clean. It actually reads the pipe to make sure it's clean enough. If not, it says the fault, and you do it again. And then when it says it's good, you push the button, says weld. And that thing itself, it's got sensors on it, it welds it to the plans it's getting, it's, it's gone. That was the only reason we've not used this, like I said, historically, had regular pipe, is because it's always been pretty really expensive. Whatever reason now, HDPE pipe has maintained the same price since September for a PVC pipe, it just kept going. With few, this has kept going up and up and up and up and up. So right now, it's our opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Music, Ford, you said?
Mr. Music, how, how much, you can, you can, over here.
I tried to forget your stuff.
The timeline on the HDPE versus PVC?
Six to eight weeks on HDPE, five months on.
Five more.
Obviously, Mr. Chairman, we've read all of, since we got this information. And you guys can go over there and just like I can, read it, see the, that pipe versus PVC pipe. It's fifty-one, one fifty, but, you know, I mean, there's, people are using it everywhere. And if you start looking like he says in the municipalities, um, you're right, City Valos is using, uh, that type of pipe. I think what you, to Commissioner Lambis, Jimmy told me these folks, they're on the timeline. I don't, Michael said we're gonna not have no problems, but I'm not sure we're having a problem with PVC. So, um, you said these welders, I mean, it's not gonna be Donald there with a stick letter down there.
That's exactly.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
Once it's, once it's installed and completed, are, who are we gonna look to, to repair when you have, you know, if you get leaks, or you have to go out there and tap into it? We don't have one of those welders, so, or do we have anybody that's probably qualified to do it, so at that point, where are we going with that?
What I think you'll find is you're gonna do same as PVC pipe. There's one, there's one coupling. What you do is you bolt this thing to the pipe itself. It's got whatever size tap you want, as a tap comes off of it. And then they slide a board machine inside that tap while it's, while it's under pressure. They slide a board machine in there and they board it, and it's out, the oil on the valve bolt holds it to it. When they pull it out, you close the valve and you're, and you're warm, and then you hook the pipe to it, you're on. That's what you do on PVC pipe, the exact same thing on the resistive.
So, when you tap into it, you don't have to weld?
No, you don't have to.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify about two, PVC or this type of pipe, you're gonna call a contractor to come fix it. Yeah, we're not doing, we're not doing PVC in house, we're gonna call, Mr. Music, come out there to the.
My question, my only question is, where does that contractor at? Well, I mean, who's the guy that's gonna come repair, because when you got a bunch of water main?
We call him, we have him out there.
Everywhere you got one lately, you can call one.
Well, that's what, that's what I was getting at.
But the reality is, I don't do wet taps either, I, usually you'll hire somebody at O-Cap or whatever, they come in with a truck and a little crane and a special little machine, they install it, they board it, they take it all, and you pay them, they go away. I mean, it's, it's, it's a specialty item, and you're gonna pay them to like.
But it's a contractor that's gonna take.
That's.
Or not, or not have a machine in, in house and not, it's really not.
No, I wouldn't go. You'd be going backwards if you called me out there. Well, I think fixed PVC, I've laid more than I want to admit, but, um, Mr. Music, what's the call savings on that? Um, like per foot, I have no idea. What, what, kind of, what are we talking about?
If we do the entire project, you save a hundred thousand. If they do, yes, in three months' time. Now, guys, my, my number one concern, and the number one place I'm really going to weigh this HDPE is along the road, the road ditch itself. Now, there's about, and that's about sixty-five percent of this project. There's a percentage of this project that's in a thirty-foot rideaway, that's long and straight, outside road ditch, that's got plenty of the words, you've got plenty of the road dirt, you can go out and work. If we would prefer to run the H D P E in the road ditch, and the normal pipe in, in the rideaway? 'Cause you rideaway, the pipe that's going through the rideaway is also the pipe that's going under the interstate. Your future connections are more likely to be at the interstate than they are somewhere along one thirty seven. It'd just be a percentage of that, I mean, so, you know, I've got no... What this does, this gets us to Trudely in a shorter amount of time. Because Trudely's not gonna need sewer right away, what they're gonna need is water. That gets us water there fairly quick.
You know, I think what you said, I'm glad you brought that up, so if, if Trudely or any other company was out there, we had this pipe now, but someone chose to use the PVC type pipe, hooking to that is no problem.
Talking about a tap?
Yeah, like a tap, that's what I'm saying. That's right.
Right. Okay, whatever tap you come off, Greg, you gonna answer that?
You can, you can interrupt. I wouldn't wanna go out there and do ten, I wouldn't wanna go do twenty feet of PVC, twenty feet of H D P E, I'm not, not saying that, but if you wanted to do, you know, two miles down the road, somewhere that it were connected to, and, and at that time, you didn't switch to PVC, they may connect, or, or go in for different types of materials. So you could do, you could do an extension on a different material, that's not a problem.
But you, you're going under the interstate regardless with H D P E anyway?
That's correct.
We do, should do that, use H D P E for that, because it's a directional drill. Those are not laying in a straight line and gray location, we curve and, you know, we can, we can, which way, that's why you use H D P E, it's, it's flexible. Now, you have a pullback, that, that we're going to interstate is quite a bit particular all than what, uh...
What we're using.
Is opposed to the note of the trench, because you don't have the stresses of trying to pull back on your, on your directional drill.
Why we just coming down the time and money, bro, 'cause that's all it matters, sir. I'm, I'm the, of the opinion that I'm okay with the H D P E, I just think, and it's, it's just from a time issue and not so much the money issue, but I've looked in some of it myself, and, and from what I've seen and what I've been able to find on it, it's, you know, and you're gonna put it under the interstate anyway, even though it's not the same thing, but you're still depending on it under that interstate, so I don't, I don't see where the problem is going, going all the way. Just my opinion, of your way in.
Uh, it's, it's very durable, like you said, very flexible. You know, my concern was, when they answer, was maybe the tap end.
Another company would tap on you, that's what their intuition might be.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mr. Chair, um, I would...
I don't care what y'all decide on, but it'd be nice if it was all one pipe.
One pipe, oh yeah.
Yeah, because if the repair needs to happen out there, it's gonna be you, make the call. Because I'm gonna call Mr. Music, most likely, but it'd be easier, I think, to know that it's all one pipe.
Well, I, I, I agree with that, I mean, I would all, want it all, one, one thing, if it was new.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker?
You ready to entertain that question?
Yes, sir, that's your way of handling it.
As they say, construction business, we learn at daylight.
Well, I'm talking about...
I'll offer motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, this is to change from PVC pipe to H D P E pipe on the project. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion, Chair, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we'll be bringing the change order back, and we'll reflect that, so it's all documented with the, with the three hundred thousand dollar credit that Commissioner's... What, thanks, thanks, good.
Question.
Hey, and the timeline.
And the timeline, that's right.
All right, we need to move on to item number two, optimization advertising request, qualifications for engineering services associated with the design of Seventy-Sixth Street from U S Ninety River Road, budget impact is empty.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, we don't have to do this very often for this project, uh, because we can use our continuing contract, this particular project, the funding that we're receiving for this exceeds the threshold, uh, that would allow us to use a continuing contract, so we will need to advertise a request qualifications, go through that process. Would you like to sign this here for this project?
Any motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion, Chair. Moving on, item twenty-one, administrators' comments and information. Public comment, yeah, I forgot what y'all talked about. Anyone wishing to speak? Get tired of us already. All right, we'll move on to item twenty-one, administrators' comments and information.
I have about ten more grants I wanna talk to y'all about.
You can say one.
Actually, what I wanted to say was, and I didn't wanna interrupt, a while ago, when you were talking about the inspections occurring out there, this particular project, we will be, we'll also have a, we'll have, our inspector out there will also have, uh, an inspector from another engineering firm involved in that, just like we did with, uh, utilities of the N I seventy-five. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Flynn?
Mr. Matt?
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, well, I already gave it a chance to talk.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Thank you. Uh, I, I don't have much to say, we, we're back, uh, another month, and, um, I'm glad to, uh, I see two of my constituents got left tonight, and, uh, we got Pastor William Rivers, and he's alive, so glad to have you, uh, this night, uh, Norman County Business Institute, Bob, and then she heard me, I'm coming for you tonight. And, uh, Lord, we hope we brought this other individual, really, Pastor William, tonight. So glad to have you, and so, uh, it's so good that we can just take care of county business, and, and get it done, and we work together. It makes it so good, uh, and it makes me feel proud. So, we got you, Chairman, and, uh...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, just like a couple things, we're clear, Rotary has a golf tournament this Saturday at, uh, Swan Country Club. I mentioned that, but also, Tampa Commerce has a golf tournament that'll be on Sunday, State, with the, that place, too. In their country club. Just follow up, continue to ask prayers for our staff and their families, and you move forward through these tough times. And once again, I call up, thinking, our staff, it don't, it doesn't matter if you're the person that should tell a call, or what you do there, got it done for us this time, that's a bunch of money, and I'm proud of them, that's all, man.
Please, Mr. Speaker, Chris Flynn?
Yes, sir, I'd second that, um, good job, staff, we appreciate you, our community is excited about this, about many of our buildings we're about to get, it's, uh, much needed, and we'll figure out where to put it, and how quick to get it done here shortly. Thank for our staff, and loved ones, and lost family members, and thank for the world, we got a mess going on right now. Thank for our military, uh, hang on, hang on to your hat.
Mr. Mr. Bader?
Yes, sir, I, I agree with you, Commissioner, it's troubling times for our, our world right now, but, uh, I just, again, thank all the, the staff, including Chad over there. But, uh, everyone's always sends us our information, guys, I mean, a lot of you folks don't know, but, I mean, without them, we getting all this stuff together and having this information, so we can make these decisions, and it's only possible with them. Um, I also like to say, that Miss Manny's not here, but I still think I've heard her family, what they have to go through, and, you know, always pray for the ones that, that we don't know. And there's folks out there that, that need our blessings, or need God's blessings, and we need to uplift them in our, our prayers, and, like you said, the world right now, for sure, so, uh, and I'm thankful for this board, I'm thankful for our, our people that come here and support us, or, or get on to us, Mr. B, but, uh, we appreciate all of you guys, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I don't wanna keep us long, I just wanna thank everybody for coming, to see all of you. Appreciate the staff, and Mr. Grager for, uh, bringing home the bacon there, appreciate that. And I'll just echo what everybody else had to say, and, uh, I just need a motion to consult, a motion. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Flynn, all in favor, say aye. Oh, yeah, we'll get a picture checked out.